We have not as successfully driven the calendar like I like on my meeting manager days. Before we get started, I do want to acknowledge Fairfax City Superintendent Carlos Pajardo. Some may not be familiar, maybe a stranger. As we mull about and get our tea and various caffeinated whatnots, I'm not sure. Is it Dr. Presidio, are you gonna lead us off, kick us off?
I will, whenever you're ready.
Okay, if you would please.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to start out by doing introductions. I think everybody knows Noel Klemenko, but we're joined in Mary Beth Love Glass, of course, and Kristen Michael. But we're joined by three very special guests today, teachers from three of our schools here in Fairfax. So the first guest that we have is Mimi Hale from Woodburn Elementary School, and she's a math resource teacher there. Stephanie Sigman, who's a math resource teacher at Annandale Terrace. And Elaine Hussein, Ellen Hussein, who's a math teacher at Oakton High School. So we really appreciate them being with us, and we appreciate you changing the agenda so that we could get them home at a reasonable hour. So thank you very much for that.
I already preface that we're not going to be nearly as mean to them as we were to the county staff about facilities.
Very good, very good. So we promised that we're gonna go through, we know you have already a busy day and we're behind on the agenda, so we're gonna try to go through the presentation slides very quickly and preserve as much time for discussion as possible. So what we'd like to start out with is just, you know, a quick look at the presentation outcome. So the first outcome that we're really focused on is providing information to the board on the expansion plan for FCPSON. So you'll remember we had a presentation on FCPSON back in September, a work session, where we shared information from the evaluation findings from Johns Hopkins. And at that time, we said that we would come back as soon as possible with a plan for expansion and provide as much information as possible about what an expansion model would look like, and obviously focused on the financial costs of that model. So I don't want to bury the lead in this presentation, we'll get into the details in a minute. But our plan for expansion, as we're presenting it today, is a four-year plan, and it does include a family user fee. So we'll get into those details in a minute. The second outcome here is to really look at the instructional materials. So part of our plan is to think about both the devices and the instructional materials together. So we're gonna share some information for the proposed mathematics adoption of instructional materials that is in process right now. So that's what we're gonna be focusing on today, and we'll have some timelines and next steps at the end of the presentation. So just as a reminder, for folks in the community that might be wondering, you know, why did we engage in this work? You see highlighted in red there, one of the desired outcomes from the strategic plan is that teachers, students, and parents are gonna have access to contemporary and effective technology resources. So when the board did the work with the community on developing the strategic plan, this was one of the essential desired outcomes that the community, working with the board, had identified as being essential to help us get to Portrait of a Graduate outcomes for all kids. And that is really highlighted in the green box, and I want to draw your attention to that because the purpose of this initiative is really getting at equity of access, making sure that all of our schools, all of our students have access to the devices and the high-quality instructional materials that are gonna allow them to learn and work towards those 21st century learning outcomes as we've defined them in Portrait of a Graduate. So that is the main focus of our work. We've provided a formula for what this really looks like. If we're trying to get to Portrait of a Graduate outcomes for students, what are the inputs that are necessary? So there's really two major components. The first is high-quality instructional materials in every classroom, and these are really those kind of adaptive, interactive materials that can allow teachers to target instruction at individual student learning needs in their classroom. So we'll dig into that in a little bit more in a second. The second component that we need to have are the devices and the connectivity to really make sure that our students are maximizing their learning time while they're in class with us, but also to give them the opportunity to learn outside of the classroom walls. So to really individualize the learning time, place, path, and pace for individual students in the system. And if we can provide those resources coherently to all of our teachers and all of our schools, then teachers will be able to instruct in a way that's more targeted to individual student learning needs, that's more focused on inquiry-driven instructional practices that helps students develop those deeper conceptual understandings and those skills that we've outlined in Portrait of a Graduate. So that is really the formula for success as we've defined it here. So the first component that we want to look at actually are the instructional resources. We'll come to the devices at the end. You've heard more about the devices than you have about the instructional resources. So the instructional resources, we've provided just a few kind of big-picture ideas to keep in mind as we dig in, and our teachers are gonna tell us a little bit about the materials because they were part of our adoption committee process. But making sure that we have instructional materials that are aligned to the SOLs, and you know that the state changes the standards on a regular cycle, and it's important that we update our program of studies and our curriculum to be in alignment with what we're expected to cover and help students master. It's also really important to make sure that we're providing the most effective and efficient professional development that we can to teachers. And we know that we have limited time, and we know that we have limited money. And one of the things that you'll see in the instructional materials we're gonna talk about today are opportunities for embedded professional development, built-in opportunities for teachers to really deepen their understanding and their instructional practices. So that's an efficiency component. Then meeting the needs of our diverse learners, as we've already talked about, being able to provide curriculum that can differentiate for English language learners, special education students, or just the variety of learning styles and learning needs that kids have in any classroom setting. And then finally, as we look at where the innovation is really happening in curriculum, we're seeing more and more opportunities for adaptive curriculum, where individual student learning tasks and problems are generated based on the learning data that is available through a digital learning platform. So those are some of the key concepts that are really guiding our instructional materials adoption process, and Noel's gonna talk a little bit about that process, and then our teachers will talk a little bit about their recommended materials for math.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to tell you that I'm very excited to be able to have the opportunity to share these materials with you before they come before you for approval later this month. So I don't think we usually get to highlight some of the resources, but I think this is especially important because these are very unique and exciting resources that I think you'll enjoy seeing. Just as a reminder, I know you're aware of the adoption process, but we've been in this process with mathematics for several months now. We start with a needs assessment where we survey staff to see what they're currently using and where they find their deficits are in resources and materials. So we start with that, and then we move forward into an RFP so we can check out what is happening out in the marketplace and be sure that we are identifying the highest quality materials. Once we have that in place, then we bring together a committee, and you all support us with members for that committee, as well as we conduct a public time. So we're at the point right now where in a couple weeks, actually, one week from tonight, as new business will come forward, the recommendations. We want to take a little bit of time tonight to share the materials that we've identified or that the committee is recommending for grades K through pre-Calc. So the materials that you get in a couple weeks will be, or next week, will be all the way through calculus, but these are the ones that are kind of our core materials. So I think it's important to understand that the goal of this adoption for this cycle was not to buy something to replace everything that we're doing and just turn everything around. It was really to complement the great variety of resources that we already have and to identify things that were going to move us kind of to that next level of teaching and learning. We looked for materials that would provide students the opportunities to work with mathematics, work with rich problems, relevant mathematics, and to really change the sort of mathematical experience, to have more individualization, as Dr. Presidio mentioned. For teachers, we were looking for something that would really help them differentiate. Having been a classroom teacher, it is a challenge to try and find the right materials for all of your students that are sitting in front of you. And that is a workload issue, and that is a challenge for all teachers, and we wanted to find materials that would lighten the load and make them more effective and more efficient in that process, as well as another component being that on-demand PD. They can come to PD, we can provide PD, but they need it in the moment when they need it, and we need it to be there and available to them. So those were some of the things we were looking at. If you look up here, we do have an elementary product that we are recommending, and two different products for middle and high, which the teachers will speak to in just a minute. But for the first time that I can ever remember, we actually have one additional product that goes across K-12, and I'll explain a little bit about that after the teachers talk about the different leveled materials. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mimi.
Hello. So Stepping Stones is the product that we are looking at. There you go. It offers students the opportunity to find multiple ways to solve a problem, to develop their conceptual understanding. The example that's given is one example of having multiple representations to solve a simple addition problem, eight plus nine equals sixteen, seventeen, or Matthew Church. And another way to also make seventeen, it was with eight plus eight plus one, decomposing the nine to eight plus one. This program offers students time to work with each other and to collaboratively problem-solve and create these representations with digital manipulatives, and also offers the support to teachers that they might need in promoting teaching these ideas most conceptually and in a way that may not be the most comfortable way for teachers to teach. But Stephanie is going to talk about the next product.
So I'm gonna speak a little bit about the middle school book. It was created by Discovery. It's called Math Tech Book. And the two things that I want to focus on is the reason why I think this is a great resource for students is because it really does provide authentic, critical thinking, engaging, rigorous tasks that really motivate them to be collaborative and to work with each other through this problem-solving activities. As for the teacher side of it, what I really liked about it is that as a middle school teacher, you really struggle with explaining to students why we're learning this math. And most of the problems that are in this build around the contextual knowledge. It really, really explains the why we're learning the mathematics. And then I'm gonna go ahead and let Ellen speak.
So in high school, we are recommending MathSpace, which is a digital platform that delivers math content in an interactive way that supports and focuses on problem-solving and critical thinking. A few of its strengths, it has many, is that it has the capability to provide and customize feedback to each student and to their teacher about where the student is having difficulty. So what you see up on the screenshot here is an example of a student's proof in geometry, and it's providing timely feedback customized just to that student's response in a timely way, and it's also recorded, and so all that data is provided to the teacher in a timely way so that he or she can provide that differentiation, whether it be enrichment, remediation, or just additional practice. So I think it's one of the main strengths for MathSpace. And I'll turn it back over to Noel to talk about.
So Q Thank is that resource I spoke of, that's a K-12 resource. What you see up on the screen is a student representation of a famous math problem called the handshake problem. So this particular resource provides just a rich bank of high-level tasks that students engage with, and then they can actually use the software to model this visually, to record their voiceover. You can see over on the side for students to comment on the strategies. And this particular problem, as I said, is very, it's famous in the math world. You all may not be familiar with it, but this is a student, an elementary student representation, right? It's a math problem, a simple problem with a drawing. At middle school, the same problem can be addressed maybe through a table. At high school, through an algebraic representation. So this is providing us that vertical articulation, not necessarily every problem going up all three levels, but it's that vertical articulation of a process, how we go about solving deep problems, and vertical articulation of problem-solving strategies, which you could imagine if we started something like this at that early age and kept it going all the way through high school, students would not be looking at word problems with the dread, and I'm not even sure how to tackle this, because we will be giving them explicit and vertically-articulated strategies and processes. So we're really very excited about all of these materials because they really do present something that we don't have the ability to build ourselves, right? The individualization here, the level of sophistication and interactivity is something that is not something that we can do a summer curriculum development project and create. So it really fills a need and really complements our already rich resources through our planning and pacing guides and such.
All right, thank you very much. So these materials are great on their own without the devices. We can use the technology that we have in classrooms to, you know, utilize some components of the features of these programs, but obviously paired with a device that students are gonna be able to work at their own pace, at their own time, outside of the classroom is really the ideal situation of where we want to be. We really need to have both because that's breaking down those equity barriers between the students that have access to the technology and those that don't, right? So thinking about what a rollout plan for expansion would look like, we've put together this chart, and again, in the interest of time, I'm just gonna high-level, provide a high-level overview. And essentially, if you follow those green boxes across the chart, those are the years that we would roll out the one-to-one devices. So starting in the 1819 school year, we would roll out our devices to the remaining high schools that do not currently have access to the one-to-one devices. So we're one-to-one in six of our high schools right now, which is great, but we have an equity issue in the remaining high schools that we have where students don't have access to that resource. So we would start at high school with the idea that high school students really are those, obviously, that are gonna be leaving our system the soonest, and where we need to make sure that they have those skills to be successful in college and careers when they leave us. We would then backwards implement the plan, moving down to middle schools in the 1920 school year, and then move down to grades four and five the following year, or excuse me, grades six and five the following year, and then move down to grades four and three the year after that. So this again is a grades three through 12 implementation model of one-to-one, okay? I want to talk a minute about our financing, and Kristen is gonna walk us through this. And we did post some additional documents that we might want to pull up to reference some additional information on the cost. So I'm gonna let Kristen walk us through the financial modeling.
Thank you so much, Sloan. I actually think it might be easier from the supplementary materials that we posted. So first, we look at the instructional resources. That one. Okay. At the top part of this chart, what it shows is, just as Sloan said, in which year we would be purchasing which set of instructional resources and for what grades. So at the top part of the chart, what you can see is in FY19, we would be purchasing social studies materials for grade four. We had purchased the other grades all this current school year. And then in FY19, we would also be purchasing these math resources for all of our grades, right? And that next line, that shaded line, shows you that we currently have $2.7 million in our base budget in terms of recurring funding for instructional materials. So we would need to add .3 million in FY19. And then as we move into FY20, we would implement language arts at the high school level. And at that point, we would add an additional $3 million to our base. That's the incremental increase. So in total, we would have $6 million in our baseline budget to fund a sustainable model for instructional resources. So when we look a little bit farther down the chart, it shows you exactly how much we would be spending for these materials as we have them projected in each of the years. So if you look down in FY19, you see we have $1 million for fourth-grade social studies, and then the mathematics is projected to cost $10.4 million for $11.4 million in total expenditures, right? And it goes through each year and shows you that cost moving forward. So I mentioned high school language arts in 2020. You can see that that projected cost is $7.6 million. At the very bottom of the chart, if we scroll down just a little bit farther, what it shows is that we currently have $9.3 million in our instructional materials or instructional resources, previously called our centralized textbook fund. So if you remember back when we first started purchasing new materials, first for social studies and then for math, when we implemented those instructional resources, we started reducing schools per pupil allocations and setting that funding aside. So we were reducing for math, elementary, and middle schools $10 each, and for high school, $7.50. And then in terms of social studies textbooks for middle and high schools, we were reducing their per pupil allocations by $10.93. So when we look at that funding, it lets us start off FY19 with $9.3 million in our textbook reserve, right? So we have been planning on needing to replace these math resources since we originally implemented the last ones. So we have $9.3 million in that textbook reserve. We're gonna continue to set aside funding from schools for social studies and math. So you can see that $1 million for social studies and $1.8 million for math. And then when we get to 2020, from that point forward, we would have $6 million in our base budget, right? And with this level of funding, it would be sustainable over time, allowing us to continually refresh these as needed. Okay, so I'll go ahead and I'll, do you want me to go into the next one? Okay, so if we can open the other document, and the other one is the summary of FCPSON. So it says FCPSON financial details. Okay. So this document at the top, again, mirrors the chart that's shown, Sloan. So the first line you can see is when we would be doing that school-level implementation. So high school in FY19, middle school in FY2020, and then we've broken elementary out in 20 and 21. So our methodology in terms of having a really sustainable model is that in terms of the devices themselves, we would outright purchase 50% of them, right? And then we would lease purchase the other 50%. So for the 50% that we would lease purchase, student fees would allow us to have enough funding to refresh those every four years, and I'll talk more about that as we work through this plan. In addition, a key component that's critical is we will have MiFi devices available. Those are the hotspots, so any student who needed access at home would be able to have that, and they would be available to any student who needed one. In addition, to make this model efficient and effective in schools, we've added additional resources in terms of our T-Specs, our technology support specialists, adding an additional half of a position at our largest schools. And then also, if you remember back, many years ago, we reduced ESbit's school-based technology specialist at the elementary level. Our smallest elementary schools currently have a half, and this model would bring it to a full-time ESbit at all of our elementary schools once we get to the elementary implementation. And then the last item is professional development. In order to ensure an effective rollout, we would include professional development for the first two years at each level. So when you look at the funding requirement, I talked about in terms of the devices, we would lease purchase half and outright purchase half. So on the one-time funding requirement line, what you see is that's the cost to outright purchase half of the devices for each level. So it would be $10 million to outright purchase half of the high school-level devices. And then you can see middle school, it'd be $6 million moving across. So over time, the investment that we would need to make in terms of that one-time funding would be $28 million. So when we look at where that funding is coming from, for the high school devices, we currently have come up with a model in terms of funding that $10 million. The first is high schools would contribute $3 million. It's basically funding from carryover from last year, so they would be setting aside amount per pupil in order to fund $3 million of that $10 million cost. The next item is we would repurpose $3 million from our current replacement equipment account. And then the last item that the board hasn't seen yet, but you will, is we're recommending that we set aside $4 million as part of our mid-year '18 budget review in order to fund that $10 million in cost. So as we look at moving forward for the other levels, our expectation is that we would also ask middle and elementary schools to contribute for a portion of the cost, just like high schools, coming out of their carryforward, and then we would also look for one-time funding sources to complete that implementation model. When we look at the recurring cost, that next pink shaded line, you can see for high school, we have a cost of $1.4 million. That's the cost of the positions for high school, right? So that would be recurring added to the base. When we get through fully implementing the elementary level for FCPSON, our total funding added to the base will be $8.6 million. So that's the total going all the way across. When we look in terms of funding those devices, the 50% with one-time funding, as Sloan indicated, we would charge a $70 per student fee per year that would provide us with enough funding to replace them every four years. So we would have a sustainable model, both for these new ones that we're implementing and for our e-backpack schools. So currently, our highest poverty high schools have devices that were initially purchased from the state, but this would allow us to ensure that we had a sustainable replacement model. Again, that fee would be reduced to $35 for students who are eligible for reduced-price meals, and for students that are eligible for free meals, there would be no fee at all. So when we look to the bottom of this chart, this shows the costs for each level, so you can see how much we would be spending in total. So for high school, you can see that the lease purchase cost for devices is $2.9 million. And we also have funding in place in terms of parts, so we can be sure that we have these devices always up and running and ready for students, that's .5 million. The MiFi cost is .4, and then that professional development, which is just for the two years, is .6. And then you'll see the positions, the T-Specs, at our largest high schools for $1.4 million. So that's $5.8 million in costs. And when you look at how we're funding that $5.8, that's the next section below that. So you can see that we're getting the first $1.4 million by repurposing 25% of schools' current per pupil allocations for textbooks. So with these new electronic resources, we feel that we could contribute 25% of that per pupil allocation to supporting this initiative. And then next, we're repurposing 75% of our replacement equipment for computers each year, so for high school, that's $1.8 million. And then we also have some savings that come from current baseline funding and us paying our lease payments in arrears. So in total, that's how we would cover that $5.8 million in expenditures. And then as a summary, just at the bottom, you can see for high schools, we would have that $10 million in outright purchase cost, and then that $5 million for $15.8 million in total. So that's how you can walk through this chart for each level.
All right, so thank you very much. There's a couple more slides if we could bring the PowerPoint back up, but you can see now why I asked Ms. Michael to walk through the financials, and I know that we're gonna have a lot of questions about that. So just a couple more slides real fast, and then I promise we'll get into questions here in just a second. So another thing that we thought was really important when we met with the meeting managers was to try to be really upfront about some of the benefits and some of the challenges with the plan that we've brought forward today. So on the, you know, benefit side, as we talked about, we have this equity issue where many of our students currently have access to devices, whether they're in a school, like one of our six high schools, or whether they come from a family that's made that investment, like my own. My own kids bring their devices to school, and that's great, but there's a lot of students that don't have the opportunity to do that in their school. So we have an equity issue that we really need to think about. And quite frankly, in some ways, we've even expanded that equity issue by some of the things that we've done, investing in technology in particular schools. So we need to think about that. The workaround Portrait of a Graduate really is going to need to be accelerated with the kinds of resources that it takes to allow teachers to be able to differentiate and instruct for those skills and outcomes in every classroom for every child. And these devices and these materials will support teachers in doing that. Making sure that our curriculum is aligned to the SOL standards, as we already mentioned. The idea of adaptive curriculum, again, what we're talking about with this math adoption is not our entire curriculum, it's a slice of our curriculum, something that we can't create. The opportunity to have digital adaptive curriculum that's going to meet the needs of individual students. We also really think that we want to promote engagement in our instruction and make sure that students develop a strong sense of self-efficacy with learning math, for example, which will hopefully promote students to take more math courses and break down some of the gaps that we have, stereotypical gaps that we have in math enrollment right now. And then this idea of instructional coherence is really important. I believe that it's incredibly important that in every classroom that we make a basic investment, even when that investment is very expensive, to provide the same kinds of learning materials and resources in every single classroom in Fairfax County Schools. That's one of the things that we've talked about many times since Dr. Brabran has been here, and we talked about even a little bit today as part of our work session, making sure that we've got excellence in every classroom across the county. But there, of course, are challenges with what we're talking about doing as well. So the first is that when we adopt digital materials, you own a contract for a certain period of time, and when that contract expires, you don't own that product anymore. So that's why it was really important that we worked very closely with financial services to put together a long-term, sustainable model where we're building in expectations that we're gonna have those recurring contract costs that we're gonna have to renew in those out years. And financial services has helped us put together a model for that. We will have limited hard copy materials. So in our last math adoption, we bought quite a few hard copy materials. We heard from a number of our parents that they wanted hard copy materials. Again, we have lots of different hard copy materials in our existing curriculum that students can access, and we have the remaining hard copy materials that we purchased from the last math adoption five years ago that we can still use. The technology user fee is something, obviously, that's new, something that we haven't done before, so that is a significant challenge for us to think about. And we do know that we've heard from parents some concerns about screen time. Those are very legitimate concerns, but again, what we're asking students and teachers to do is not have students sitting passively in front of screens. is not have students sitting passively in front of screens, but engaged actively in front of screens when it's appropriate. Not all the time, but when it's appropriate, doing things like research, doing things like collaboration, communication using the devices. And then device compatibility is always a challenge. We ran into that challenge five years ago in our adoption. And that's one of the reasons that we're bringing forward the recommendations for the math adoption early. As we've done our reviews and our tech reviews, we believe that the device compatibility is there. But if we actually sign our contracts early, we get access to the materials with enough time to work out some of those bugs and some of those glitches that we experienced last time when we adopted the materials in the summer and things came late and teachers didn't have a time to actually use the materials and work with the materials before students came back. If we adopt these materials in December and sign a contract, we'll have months for teachers to be able to work with the materials and to try to figure out if there are things that we, in fact, do need to troubleshoot. So next steps then, thinking about the timeline for the math materials. As we said, that's going to come to the board as a new business item on the 20th of November and for a vote on December 7th. And then thinking about the financing of the devices will come to the board as a first opportunity in the mid-year budget review process on December 14th. And then if those things are approved, we've got a plan to continue the professional development and also to continue our evaluation with Johns Hopkins to make sure that we're getting a good return on investment for the things that we might choose to go forward with here as a school system. All right, that was longer than I anticipated. I apologize for that, but we're excited to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, Dr. Braybrand, you're first. Then Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon.
Forty-five seconds or less. This is about excellence in every classroom. It's time to make a statement that we're about that in every classroom. George Mason, I met the president last week. He handed me his strategic plan. The first goal of 12 goals, deliver a transformative Signature Mason learning experience that is experiential, global, and technology-rich. That's what our four-year colleges are doing. That's what we need to do. So excellence. Equity, we have one pyramid that has it and a whole lot of other pyramids that don't. We have some elementary schools using local funding that have been one-to-one for 10 years. I've been visiting them myself. Others, nothing. It's time to make an equity statement of technology access for all so we can have Portrait of a Graduate for all. And then finally, effectiveness. This is a plan, when I looked at the strategic plan when I interviewed, there were a lot of dollar signs by it. This is a low-cost way of creating sustainable funding. We are asking our community for a user fee. We also asked our schools to step up and say, prioritize your carryover to say, is this important? The High School Principal Association discussed. They voted on it without me there. And Mr. Eline is here, if you have questions for him. We would do the same thing with middle and elementary. We'd continue to have the program evaluation. I believe this meets the needs of excellence, the needs of equity, and the needs of effectiveness for Fairfax County schools. You all asked for a way for a solution for this, and I feel we've brought you a reasonable one, and we look forward to the discussion.
Not forty-five seconds, but it's okay. Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, I have a lot of things. I'm going to go with my questions first and then my reaction. First of all, on the slide that Ms. Michael was walking us through, the summary sheet of FCPS ON, this one is not what I'm looking at. I'm looking at something that's longer, that in the end, it shows initial expenditure by level, and it's one-time device outright purchase, recurring expenditure total by level.
So you're looking at one of the attachments, and we need to bring that up. This is the PowerPoint, brief version on the PowerPoint.
Yeah, and the reason why I'd like to draw my colleagues' attention to it is because the first level of the numbers we were looking at, yep, so at the top, when you look at that first area in pink, that's not total. You've got to go all the way down to the very bottom. Keep going. All the way down, there we go. Okay, there. All right, so Ms. Michael, just to be clear, that section between the dark green, it's the best color I can call that, one-time device outright, so initial expenditure by level, go all the way to the very bottom. Is that the bottom line per year?
So that's the cost in the initial year for each level. So that is 46.5 million if you add it across. But it's the cost in the initial year of implementation.
I know, but so what I want, what I, I don't particularly liked how this chart read because if you kind of do your math, every year, there's a recurring cost that needs to loop over and then loop over and loop over. And so when I did the calculations and the looping, what you're really looking at is, so year one, where it says 15.8 million. The next year for middle school, you go to the one-time cost, it's 6 million. But then you're going to have the recurring cost of 5.8. So you're really looking at 11.8 million. Then year three, you're going to have your one-time cost for your elementary at 6 million. But now you've got to add the returning, recurring costs of the prior two years that are recurring. So now you're at 14.6. Year four, you're going to be at 19.5 million. And then year five, where you add up across the way, the recurring, you're at 18.4 million. And that's barring that the tech companies and everybody else involved aren't going to raise their rates along the way. So what I added up was, if I'm correct with the one-time, but then the recurring cost of the year prior, you're talking $61.7 million over four years. So while I absolutely understand, in theory, Dr. Braybrand, that we want equity, we want excellence, and the enthusiasm, $61.7 million over four years is a lot of money in a system that we're trying to figure out, teacher compensation, class size. So this kind of notion that we've got this built in and we can handle it, it's still almost $62 million that we're going to direct to this versus something else. And I think that's absolutely the question we need to have. So, Ms. Michael, was my math correct on that roughly? I mean, my interpretation of that you're talking about, you have to take the carryover to each year.
So you are correct. Once we've added the positions, say the T-Spec positions for the high school in year one, those positions do carry over to year two.
But I don't want to complicate this. I'm just going to go with what numbers people are looking at. Was I correct that you take your one-time cost, but then you have to, year two, take your recurring fund from year one and slip it over so that now you're looking at 6 million in year two plus 5.8? So those numbers down the bottom kind of give you a little more, oh, that's not so bad. But it's not. The number is going to grow from 15.8 million to 19.5 in year four. It's 19.5 million dollars.
So there's no question that that's a lot of money, right? And then we put that in the context of a $2.6, $2.7 billion budget. And then we think about it with the approximate number of students, grades three through 12. And then we think about that spread out over the cost on a per-year basis, and we're at about $130 a kid, right? So I just think it's important to think about and contextualize it a little bit differently because it is a lot of money, but it's a lot of students, which is why it's a lot of money. And on a per-student basis, this whole question of the investments that we need to make and what is a, you know, what's a reasonable amount of investment there? I think it's important to think about it that way, too.
I very much appreciate you talking about that, when you look at the overall size, those numbers are going to look big. Anything we do always looks bigger in size. I will remind everybody that for the longest time, we didn't do what was in the best interest of kids, which was later high school start times, because on a large system, we said we couldn't afford it. So I'm just struggling with the fact that when there's things that this school division wants to do, 15 million a year or 60 million over four years is not so bad. But then when we talk about some other things, it's, you guys go ahead, school board members, you find a couple million dollars. So I just wanted people to have a bigger picture than I think that.
Just a point of clarification. You've missed the additional money of, that you've shifted to the students at the $70 per student that's on top of this.
Yes, okay, so thank you, Ms. Schultz, because that's my second question. I would assume that our general counsel or division counsel, John Foster, looked into this. But I will just tell you all that I look forward to having division counsel explain this because, as I understand it, we are required to give a free and public education. So I don't know how we're, I don't know how we're able to say to families, you've got to cough up 70, like, let's take the McLaughlin family, cough up $70. Mine are all graduating out, so it's really all hypothetical. But, I mean, we might be totally fine with that. But there could be families that say, I don't believe in this. I don't want any more screen time for my kids. And you're forcing our family to pay for something that we don't want to pay for. So I guess, again, not to belabor it because there's so many other things to talk about, but in a nutshell, we don't think the $70 device that requiring families to pay, there's going to be pushback and people accusing us of no longer, like, we don't make families pay for textbooks, but we're going to make them pay for this.
This is, this is a maintenance and replacement fee. We'll have the free and reduced lunch sliding scale. Kids that still want, who've already done BYOD, would still be allowed. Ms. Lufglas can verify that. And then if parents choose not to take the fee, we would still give them a computer. However, if there was an issue with the computer in terms of it breaking or whatever, they would be responsible for the full cost.
And they would not be allowed to take them home. They could use them during the school day, in the building, but not take them home.
So is this a model that we know has worked in other school divisions, the charging the $70 in the Commonwealth of Virginia? Because that's how, that's how we test, know that it's allowed.
John Foster's not here. I know he extensively communicated with Henrico Public Schools, which is a suburb outside of Richmond, which has really been doing something like this for really the last probably 15 years.
So they have a user fee, and they've had no problems? Okay. The next thing I will say is that, in terms of, you mentioned six high schools have this now, 19 do not. Which are the six that have it now? I know Chantilly.
I'm not sure.
Chantilly, and it's our eBackpack schools. So you have Lee, Falls Church, Stewart, Annandale, Mount Vernon, and Fairfax Adult, and Chantilly High.
And an important to note is, that money is state money. There is no place to replace it.
That's a one-time, that was our one-time grants from the state.
So in two years, that, all that money, even for those schools, dries up. So we, we've, I, hmm. We're bringing you a strategic plan now. I think we needed a strategic plan earlier around this. We dipped our toe in places. It's hopscotched in some schools and not in others. This, to me, is something in 2017, we needed a division-wide approach. And that's what we're bringing to you today. That's part of why I think the textbook thing went south five years ago. I was gone when it happened. But we have have-and-have-not kids and families, and we need to create a level playing field for technology access. I will say, and I'm not the best, I mean, I've read all this 50 times, but Kristin, some of this is repurpose fees versus just pure new money. I think that would be helpful maybe to explain a little bit more, maybe, as the board is looking at this.
Sure, absolutely. So if we move farther up on this chart, it's where the lines are shaded in a pink or an orange color. So still a little bit further up right there. So you can see, we're recommending for that initial purchase, that 28 million in one-time funding. But the recurring funding, the new money that we would need to add to our budget, once this is fully implemented, is that $8.6 million. That's what would be added to the base budget, right? Dr. Braybrand, you're absolutely correct. We would be repurposing current funding that we're already using for technology, that we're currently using in terms of our per-pupil allocations. And yes, there is that user fee. But we really feel like this is a sustainable model that's maximizing our resources to reach the strategic plan goal.
I will reiterate, then, this chart needs to be revised because going all the way down to the bottom, if I'm a school board member and I'm trying to understand what this is going to cost the division, and that's what I'm reading at the bottom is, this is what's one-time, and this is what's going to be down there, it certainly communicates that the addition I did, which took a little bit of actual reinterpretation. So I, I think it's a big problem because it's a big difference from me quoting 19.5 million into year four versus Ms. Michael's trying to tell me it's only going to be 8.6, like.
Understood. We need to better separate out new additional dollars to the base budget from the reoccurring dollars, the reallocation of dollars and the user fee revenues that we're collecting.
That's essential. And then my final point, which I think really, to Sloan's point, I mean, in the end, I think if this is the right thing to do educationally, it's a, it's a budgetary priority. So I'm all behind that this is the right thing to do academically. Here's my pushback. Dr. Braybrand, you kind of preempted this. The math, the online math textbook adoption was a disaster. You missed it, but Sloan, God bless you, we're amazing. I mean, Sloan arrived in at a disaster. And I can't still get over how upsetting it was to me as a board member and as a parent to see how that affected our families. So that was a problem, major problem. And then add on to it what we've not talked about. When Lake Braddock Secondary School was part of a pilot for online textbooks for social studies, the students were surveyed, and they overwhelmingly said, please do not give us digital textbooks in social studies. Those are dense, thick books, dense, thick textbooks, and we're going to be staring at screens for hours on end. So the students didn't want math online textbooks because they're hard to work with and the platform was terrible, so they couldn't access it. Then the kids didn't want social studies, and we went through it anyway. So I, at a very macro level, for my colleagues and all the wonderful staff who are here, let me just tell you, my hesitation is, this sounds wonderful, but what I haven't heard yet is, where we've been doing this at school, what is the student and parent reaction to this? Because we, as a board, are the governing body, and we got slammed by our families in saying, I don't know what you were deciding to do, but you harmed kids in the process instead of help.
Okay, we got slammed, and we didn't even make them pay for it.
I want to respond just real briefly to that because, I mean, I think these are really, really important points, right? And I'm not going to sit here and tell you that the implementation of this would be perfect by any means, right? There will be challenges, and we've tried to highlight some of them. And one of them is limited access to hard copy materials. So a couple of things I would say that are different from when we rolled out five years ago. The first is, the actual technology has really improved in terms of the quality of the materials from five years ago. So you're 100% right. Like, a lot of the materials that we were looking at five years ago are essentially PDF versions, right? And that's, that is difficult if you've got, you know, 60 pages of, you know, AP European history that you need to read. So we're not recommending that for every class, for every subject, that the materials are going to be digital. In fact, even in the math adoption, the higher-level math courses, our AP, our IB classes, those are hybrid adoptions, where there's some hard copy, there's some digital copy. So those are hybrid. The same thing is going to be true when we go into the following year, into language arts. And it's important to remember in that financial model we looked at, that does not just include math. That includes math, and then the next year out, that's language arts. And then the next year out, that's science, right? So there's a lot of instructional materials that are built into that high-dollar figure that we discussed. For language arts, we wouldn't just be adopting digital materials. We'd get class sets of novels. We'd get, you know, large print books in some of our, you know, primary grades. So there would be a variety of kind of hybrid things. But here, we're really highlighting the things that are unique about the digital curriculum because those are things that we can't create on our own in our own program of studies.
But just clarifying, this is the, this is the technology component. This isn't the curriculum itself.
This, this includes the costs of those future content area adoptions. So the materials cost is here, and we're talking about materials for math that are primarily, primarily digital, as we discussed, with those exceptions where they were hybrid, that I talked about at the advanced levels. Then it includes the costs for language arts, future language arts, which we haven't even convened a committee and started the process of the needs assessment, the RFP. But we know that we wouldn't get 100% digital.
Right, so yes, Dr. Braybrand, it does need to be better broken out. I have Ms. Strauss.
Just to be clear, the numbers you are looking at on this sheet are purely for the device. The other sheet that I started with was the instructional.
That's my point. So Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon, Ms. Corbett Sanders in the lineup.
Okay, I, I think this is terrific. I think, I mean, we have to go down this road. We have to figure out a way to do this. And I think we've learned a lot in the last five years. And the instructional content has moved a long way to figuring out what's useful. And a combination of a fee and repurposed money and carryover funds from schools, I think threading all of that together is a responsible way to do it. Yes, it does cost money, but this is a road we're going to have to go down. And at some point, we were going to have to begin it. So I think this gives us a sustainable way to, to begin to do that. The content that kids have to learn and work with changes constantly. And to not have truly one-to-one is going to handicap our kids because they're not going to have the content that everybody else has got. I mean, that's just the world we live in. because they're not going to have the content that everybody else has got. I mean, that's just the world we live in. So my initial question was whether or not we could charge a fee. And I understand legally, they've said, yes, we could. It may be that there are other fees that we have implemented that we might have to pull back. It was just so far. Maybe the activity fee, we have to eat and not charge that, or the parents would be upset. But I think we've learned, and I'm very pleased that we're continuing to work with Johns Hopkins so that we are using this resource in a way that is the most effective in the classroom. There is no silver bullet, and there are times when it's, when it's hard copy. There are times when it's chart paper on the wall. There is times when it's whiteboards, and there are times when it is technology. So, and certainly screen time. But the content that the kids need to learn, a lot of it is just simply available electronically. It's just where it is. So I think this is very creative, and so there may be a lot of questions. We need to, you know, clearly understand this so we can explain it. But I think it's doable. So I am very pleased to see this, and I think it's time.
Mr. Moon, then Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Mr. McAlveen.
First of all, I'm going to request Madam Chair to consider scheduling a close meeting with John Foster so that I could ask you some questions in a close meeting.
Yes, I know in Virginia, there, there may be other questions we would have.
Sure. And I'll be asking questions by usual fee.
Yes, exactly.
Knowing, fully knowing that what he will say, but I have some other specific question related to that. I have a simple question regarding those dates I saw on one of, one of the slides where you had December 7th for the school board approval of math basil material. And we also have December 14th for media buzz review. And that's going to be, this is going to be part of that media buzz review. And I wanted to ask you about how critical those dates are. Whether, whether we need to make a decision on those days. If we miss those days, then we'll be, not be able to achieve the one we need to achieve, that's one. And, and also, once we make the decisions on those days, is that the final decisions we're making for the next, I don't know how many years on these? Or if you somehow in the future find that experiences are not as good as we thought, that it might be, then whether there's a way to turn back our decisions?
Great, thank you very much. So understanding that the board needs adequate time to make decisions, I would not say that these dates could not be adjusted, but these dates are the optimal dates. So starting with the materials first, the idea would be for us to get approval from the board on the math materials as soon as possible so that we could finalize those contracts, actually get our teachers' access to the devices as soon as possible, and start to work on the implementation plan of rolling those out. The sooner we start that, the better. So if the board were to choose to push that back a few weeks, we can make that work if the board needs more time, but the sooner we can do that, the better. The same thing being true with the devices. If we're going to roll out devices one-to-one in, you know, 19 high schools, we need to start the process of procurement, ordering as soon as possible. And we need to start the professional development for our teachers as soon as possible. And the PD component for the devices is bigger than the PD component even for the materials, which is big. Because we need to help teachers really think about, how do you set up your classroom to run effectively in a one-to-one environment? How do you manage all of the devices in your classroom? How do you set up your classroom infrastructure so that you can really ensure that students collaborate effectively? How can you use the technology more to make your instruction more efficient and more effective? So the sooner we could do that, the better. Then to your question with respect, is there a turning back point? You know, I think there's, there always, you know, needs to be a turning back point. That's, that's the point of measurement, evaluation, and reflection. And that's why we want to continue to work with Johns Hopkins because we want to make sure that we're doing work and making monetary investments that actually have a high return on investment. So we've got plans to continue working with Johns Hopkins. We've got another evaluation that they're going to do in year two of our pilot schools this year. If the board chooses to expand for next year, we would be able to take a look at high schools and see how successful our high school initiative was and whether or not we're ready to roll out at middle schools the next year, whether or not we need to delay it, or whether or not we need to quit doing it, right? Quite frankly. So that's the way we've built this out, phasing this implementation in as it gives us multiple opportunities as a school system, if things aren't working, to either delay, readjust, or discontinue.
So I'm going to ask you a couple of follow-up questions very quick. On the dates, I mean, I appreciate that you said those are the optimal days, but can be delayed for a few weeks. Is that few weeks meaning two, three, or is it four, five, or six, seven? I know you said all the, but I just want to have a better, you know, better sense as a board member that when I need to really cast my vote in such a way.
Right. So we were hoping to go with these dates. I would say, you know, just kind of thinking about how much time the board needs, you know, maybe if the board could discuss that, you know, if we could do it within a month of these dates, I'd hate to go farther out than a month of these dates.
Okay. And the next question is that turning back, when we purchased these products, products, you know, half of that will be a outright purchase, and the other half, you said, there was a lease purchase. Outright purchase, meaning we pay for it, and that's it. Lease purchase, whether, whether there will be any termination clause where, you know, we can actually.
We wouldn't recommend, once you've leased some devices, to take them out of the hands of kids and out of the hands of schools. What, what really we would be doing is not purchasing the next level. So for example, if we decide to go forward with high schools, I wouldn't recommend buying the high schools the devices and then pulling them back out of the school. What we could do, if you decide not to move forward with middle school, is the following year not to make the additional investment in middle school. That's sort of, I think, where you'd have a year-by-year decision point about whether you would continue. I wouldn't recommend, just like we have some of our teacher laptops are leased, I wouldn't recommend we just pull, not, you know, cancel that lease and pull those laptops out of the hands of teachers. I wouldn't recommend doing that with students.
What about, what about the basil materials? Is there something that you, once you sign a contract, you'll be bound by, it tells you no termination?
For the term of the contract, yeah.
Term of the contract, so. All right, we'll be making very serious investments, depending upon the decision by the board.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Mr. McAlveen, Ms. Palczek, Ms. Darnak Kofax, and then me.
Thank you. And I'm glad I'm following Mr. Moon because I have similar questions. I understand that this is a supply issue when it comes to textbook materials that going forward, many of the textbook manufacturers have pulled back from print materials and are using the digital space to provide that. So I think that's important for everybody to understand, but we also need to look at the scheduling of this. And I feel a little, I feel like the schedule seems to be out of, out of sequence because we're actually looking at doing an FCPS on expansion decision and then making the decision on the math basil, but making the math basil materials decision prior to it. So I think we need to look at the timing of this to have a better understanding and have a fuller discussion with it. I also think because what we're talking about is transforming the way that we deliver materials, deliver our education, it's a, it's a new model that we do owe it to our community to engage them in this. We engage them into whether or not we are starting school on a certain day. We should be engaging our community on whether or not we want to transform to a full digital delivery model. And I don't think that that precludes meeting your, the rough schedule that's up there, but I think that we do, we should provide some period of time in which we engage the community. Additionally, in the proposal that's presented, it only has professional development for two years. And I'm a little concerned because it seems like after the discussion earlier today of ongoing professional development, that this should be embedded and have a longer term, longer view. So I would suggest that. And then regarding the financing and having fees paid, I agree with Mrs. Strauss that if we're adding fees, then we should relook at some other fees. And I also think we should be looking at the elasticity of demand, of how much people are willing to pay versus, you know, where did we get $70? Why not $50? Why not $100? I'd like to better understand that. And then the last question I have is regarding the digital textbook licensing. What is the period of li, of the licensing agreement? Is it seven years? Is it five years, seven years? And if we look at the social studies, are we thinking that just going forward, they're all seven years? That's the standard?
That's the standard. That's great.
Okay.
So a lot of great questions, just a few things to offer in response. First of all, with the timeline in respect to almost like, do we have the cart before the horse here with, you know, materials versus devices and how do those two things go together? Make, I think it's really important to remember that we make sure to understand that the committee that came together and did the needs assessment, right? Really hearing from teachers, hearing from schools about where are our gaps in our curriculum. The whole review process of looking at all the publishers' materials that were available came to the conclusion and the recommendation of these materials without any discussion of whether or not we would go to a one-to-one platform in schools. And I, not to put any of our teachers on the spot, but they were so polite to come here. Some of them might want to respond to this question as well. The, the central premise of what we're talking about here with the formula of the materials and the devices is that when we do, do those two things together, that's where we maximize impact. But we're going to have a lot of impact just with the devices, or excuse me, just with the materials used in a classroom setting as it stands today, right? Those opportunities to use the interactive materials during classroom instruction. Now, there's a lot more power when students can have access to that curriculum outside of the school day as well. So one is not necessarily dependent upon the other. But together, that's the package and the formula to get to portrait of a graduate.
But if I can be very honest with this board, this is the conversation we had in leadership team. Sloan shared the plan for the materials. I said, oh, my gosh, this is going to be the same equity issue. Part, I want to see a plan to address the device. I mean, and, and Mary Beth was like, yes, 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 and yes. So that is the honest, right, to take the conversations we're having privately and bring it to the, we had this exact same thing. We could go ahead and keep moving with materials. Oh, well, look, most of them are digital. Versus let's saying if we're moving that way, let's give every kid access. Because the kids that already have it, they get it in class, and then they get to go home and double up and triple up. I want all of our kids to have the same shot at being able to have this opportunity in class and frankly, outside of class. The only other thing too, and it's already been said, but I absolutely agree with the comment Sloan made into this board. We have Johns Hopkins. We can go a year at a time. You can review. And if you're not pleased with the results, you can slow this down. This isn't a one-and-done moment. But I absolutely believe, we're already in a third of our high schools saying technology matters. We don't have a plan in those poorer schools to replace the technology. In the other schools, we don't have the technology. So I feel like we've got to get on, we have to have a systematic process around this work. And this is our best, a best approach at trying to do it in a responsible fashion.
Dr. Brabran, I don't disagree with you. The question is, how do you bring the community with you?
Right.
And if we roll this out without bringing the community with us, then we are at risk of repeating the mistakes of the past when we rolled out the digital textbooks. So I would suggest that it's, this is a, an important enough issue that we take the time to bring the community with us because then they will get behind it and ideally, and we can roll it out.
Right. And I'm sure we can figure that out. We have seven high school communities that really have already had a chance to engage with this technology. And we can figure out how we, we can figure out a way to do that engagement. I don't have that answer tonight, but we can absolutely do it.
And that's part of why we really would be interested in soon as possible in, you know, understanding the board's intentions. Because if we started that community engagement process now, right? The sooner we start that, the more time we have for that. So that was one of the next steps that we had up there. We've done a lot of surveying of community members. We've done that through the Johns Hopkins evaluation, through our Brightbyte survey. We know that we have really compelling data in terms of parents saying that there's some urgency and they see the value of technology. But the user fee and how that's going to work and how that's going to roll out, no, we haven't done that community engagement. And we would want to start that as soon as possible. You're 100% right. And then the other question that you asked around the professional development, yes, it's two years on that chart. No, it doesn't mean after two years, you don't get any PD. The two years is when we would focus very intensively the professional development that we provide to schools. And we have a model that we've been using with our Phase One schools of where we build the capacity of instructional leaders in the school working with central office to lead that work in their schools. But there's professional development opportunities outside of that as well. One of the things that we're working on right now is a digital PD platform to offer differentiated PD for the kinds of skills that teachers would need to access at particular times. So really intense PD for two years, differentiated PD after that.
Okay, I have Ryan McAlveen, Dolly Palczek, Tamara Darnak Kofax.
Thank you all for bringing this to us, particularly in advance of it getting out into the community as happened last time. So that's much appreciated. I do think this is a very thorough and excellent presentation on all fronts, from finance to instruction and everything. So thank you all for that. I think there's no question that this is where we want to go. I think, you know, thinking back over the past few years, you know, I, I'm reminded of Dr. Garza's presentation to the Board of Supervisors when we made that last final push before she left us about the true needs of our system. And she put up the chart that Matt and others worked on that showed, you know, our investment in technology at, you know, $100 million or whatever it would be to show part of the true needs of this system. You know, that was the cost we envisioned now. I think it's, it's something similar to that now when you add in Ms. McLaughlin's numbers. So anyway, I think this is, it's in our strategic plan. This is something that we've been looking at for a while. Strobe, or, sorry. Mr. Presidio has been working on this for the past five years, ever since he's been here. So it's, a lot of thought has gone into this. I think the problems that are presented are, are real. I think screen time is a major problem. And if you look at schools in our region, for example, the school at which my wife teaches, they are doing away with BYOD because of concerns with screen time. And so if we do this, we're going to have to have a significant education component on that, on that issue. The, the hard materials have already been discussed. All of us were part of that listening tour five years ago that we don't want to have to recreate by being too hasty on this. And so that brings me to the timeline piece. I do think it's, it's quite aggressive. I understand the reasons for it. But Ms. Corbett Sanders is absolutely correct that we have to get out in front of it and do the community engagement upfront so that we aren't left where we were five years ago.
Ms. Palczek, Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Thank you. First, I wanted to speak to the math basil instructional materials. I recently spoke with my appointee to the committee who's very excited about the work. I believe we've gone away from Pearson and those and are, are using a few more innovative and components based on what our students need to do and learn. So I'm very, I haven't gotten a chance to see, you know, exactly how they work, but I'm, I'm very excited about that. And thank you for working with that committee and giving them the opportunity to explore that. I guess my, I will echo some of my colleagues' comments. Obviously, I was not here five years ago when that first all that happened. I, I do believe we can learn from our mistakes, and it's helpful to hear that some of the materials have moved forward. I, I do think it's important to move in that direction. I think the equity piece is huge. That's how Horace Mann got started in bringing us public education, seeing that resources in different schools were very different. I know some of our schools can ask for PTAs to fund laptop carts and others cannot. So it is a huge equity issue, and, and I appreciate that we're being thoughtful. So I think it's important to know that we can slow it down if it is too aggressive. I do think we need to do it well. But from one of my backpack principals said that he already saw the changes in instruction. So I think that's, that's where I'm hoping we're headed. I guess my question would be, do we have a sense right now of a couple of those costs? The S-Bits and T-Specs? Do you know, Kristin, how many of our schools are? are currently trade swapping in or out for those positions? Is that pretty high, pretty low number? And the same for technology purchases?
So, when we look at that, we certainly can give you that data of exactly how many are trading out. When we looked at this funding model by both taking carryover from schools and reducing their per pupil allocations from textbooks, that's the exact funding that they would be using to trade for these resources. So, we want to be mindful that we don't both ask them to continue to trade and take away the very funding that they are trading.
Right.
But we certainly can give you the trades by school for those position types. I know certainly the elementary talk about having that halftime S-Bit as being a significant challenge in terms of quality instruction in their buildings. And then I also do know, if you're a large high school, maintaining your technology in the school, you know, many of them are also trading to get that extra half of a T-Spec. We can get you the exact numbers.
Yeah, we agree, just to get a sense of what will change with this plan. And then with technology, do we have a sense? I know it's different in every school. How much is currently, you know, being purchased per school? Is some of that trading out funding?
Right. So, we do, a lot of our schools are using, as Kristin said, that exact same per pupil allocation in some cases to buy technology. But it does vary widely by school. And that's what Dr. Braybrand was getting at, that we have an equity issue. Because some schools make it a priority, and they do trade a lot, use a lot of those resources to purchase technology, and some use none. So, that's why we have a disparity in terms of some of our schools have a wealth of technology and some have much less. And so, that's why with this plan, we're going to make it more equitable across the school so that everybody has a base, you know, a minimum amount, and obviously, having the one-to-one for every student. And this would allow us to use those resources that some schools are already using for this purpose. And then other schools will now have at least that minimum level, as well as the basal resources, that everybody will now have those resources instead of having to decide, school by school, whether they should purchase them or not.
Okay. No, I'm supportive of that. And also want to echo the comments of the community engagement and the education piece. You know, the digital citizenship, not just for students, for parents. I think this also, hopefully, will provide a good opportunity to require more of that awareness and education, obviously not creating a barrier. But perhaps we can have better incentives to ensure that's happening across the board. And I assume we, do we, does the study also track that side of this?
We have the, we showed you at the last work session, in addition to the Johns Hopkins data, we also have the Bright Bites data, which does a significant amount of analysis on the digital citizenship skills of both our teachers as well as our students. And so, that's a very effective way. Right now, we're only making, doing that evaluation in our Phase One schools. This would be, you have the ability to now have that with all schools and all students.
Just one other thing on digital citizenship, because that's work that's never really done. So, you know, we've done a lot. We've created, you know, new training for teachers in digital citizenship. That's required. We've created training for parents to take with their kids. We can't really require them to do that, right? But we're getting really good feedback on that work. And we're in the process of creating some additional required lessons for students that would hit them every year. So, it continues to evolve. And it's a big piece of work that's very important.
And then just finally, do you feel confident that we'd be able to find the staff to fill these additional positions?
Yes. As Kristin said, and as you mentioned, we, a lot of these larger schools are already trading for this. But as we said, we don't want to pull out their per pupil that they're using to trade and then not have them, give them the staff back. One of the other things about the advantage of having the S-Bits full-time now in every school is that will help with the ongoing PD as well. Because that's part of their main responsibility is to help ensure that our teachers are prepared and will have that continuing professional development.
Also, I have one final question. Did you mention, will the elementary school students be using that same, that very heavy laptop? Or are we looking at?
No, these are not heavy laptops. These are very lightweight devices. But in terms of our K through two, we would be reallocating a lot of our existing, existing equipment down to the K through two level for use in the school. So, a lot of those are iPads and other types of devices that our K two students use. But we wouldn't have the K two school kids taking them back and forth from home. So, they wouldn't have to be carrying them around. They would be in the classrooms.
Okay. And I assume with three, four, there would be a phase in. So, it's not that one we all felt last year? It's a different one?
Well, and again, we would, that would be three years from now. And so, we would be probably, we would be doing another RFP and whatnot as we get down there. So, we wouldn't want to guesstimate which device we'd be picking in three years. Thank you.
Ms. Derenak-Kovacs.
Thank you all for this presentation. I know you're all working very hard on it. And the teachers, thank you for being here today with this late time. I know. I appreciate it. Couple things. I am hot and cold on this. So excited about what I heard from Noel and the teachers as far as taking that math curriculum and providing in an equitable manner for teachers who have so many children of different abilities, one in the classroom, and how that allows for you to do it. I think that's excellent. That is, that is where we need to be. We have been talking about that in Region Three for a long time. Sloan and I have talked about that. I thank you so much for that. I think it's imperative that those children, particularly when I, and I'll talk about this in Region Three again, those children that don't have the opportunity to have a device in their home or have that, that's imperative that we have that. So, I am so for and so excited for that part of this. But I was here five years ago. And I was a parent of two students five years ago. And I understand that we had a lot of kinks. And I know you can't be a soothsayer and say, "This is a prognosticator," I guess. It's what I want to say. And, and say, "This is not going to happen again." But I do worry about the statement where we said, "There will be limited hard copies." Because that became a real issue and people, we were called upon, and I think we as a board had to fund, I don't know, another $7, $9 million for that. Because so, between that and also, what, what I'm saying is that those first comments that I made, it's imperative and it's necessary that we do that part of the equation. Where I think I get a little nervous is what experience has shown us, why many of the kids, and I think we probably need to talk to them, but I think many of us were, you know, when we saw the results of the student surveys and when we heard from the students, they were not as enamored with the online education and what, and how much screen time that required. And there are mixed reviews on that. And there are concerns about too much online time because they're always, you know, teenagers are constantly on their handheld devices. And then, you know, I know we're doing a lot of flip classrooms. So, we're doing a lot of that, which, again, it's on, online, looking for that and then coming into the classroom. So, I, I guess, and then we talk about the, I, I understand why, where we have to be and why we have to be there as far as budgeting and the timeframe. And I'm happy, Mary Beth, that we have some flexibility there. But all of those reasons, and that's why I agree with all of my colleagues who talked about the need for getting community buy-in. Because if we are imposing fees, and I think, you know, that may be something we need to think about. And, but we're going to make this requirement. And can we have options? And I guess, Dr. Presidio, you know, there was lots of, there's lots of data out there. Are you an auditory learner? Are you a visual learner? Have there been like that screen, you know, that, has that been added? Because that's like a combination of the two, but I, it's not the same as, you know, is there data out there? Is there research about how certain children have a propensity to learn better? I mean, I would just say gut instincts, since, you know, we have different types of learners. Some children, it's not going to be as effective for. But is there any research out there right now on that?
Not really as a learning style that I'm aware of. I mean, there probably is, but nothing that I'm really that familiar with in terms of technology as a learning style.
Okay.
Or, you know, we sometimes talk about, you know, learning styles, multiple intelligences.
Right.
Really, I mean, there's a lot of research about the effectiveness of technology, right? In terms of improving learning outcomes. And that changes all the time in terms of, you know, what you're really focused on. Are you focused on standardized assessment outcomes? You know, quite frankly, I mean, there's research that would suggest, yes, that can be a major driver. And, you know, there's research to the contrary. Which is why I think it's really important to remember what we're talking about with this particular adoption. And FCPS ON has always been about equitable access and opportunity to get to the use of technology for Portrait of a Graduate outcomes. So, we want people using technology for research, for collaboration, for increased communication with their classmates and with their teachers, right? To solve problems. We don't want technology to be used as something that students are just going to consume information.
Right.
There's a lot of technology programs that you can put a kid in front of a computer and work them through the program. That's not, that's not how we want to use technology, right? We really want to use it as a learning tool. And we don't want students using technology all the time. We want them learning in different ways, right? We want them having discourse with their classmates. We want a lot of question-and-answer discussion with teachers. We want students working on projects. We want students working outside of the classroom, getting dirty and getting messy. So, I mean, for us, the technology is really about driving those kinds of learning opportunities, providing the opportunity to develop Portrait of a Graduate outcomes. So, it's different. I mean, I just, I can't stress that enough.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
The adoption of these online resources are, is very different than having, it's not a replacement of textbooks. And that's what we want to stress even more so. It's an enhancement of the classroom.
I think it's important for us to hear that. Because I'm not, I'm not sure we're all hearing that. Because I don't think I was.
Okay. It's an enhancement of the classroom experience. So, even if we didn't go one-to-one, I would be able to use the resources that math space would provide in ways that could enhance my students' learning and my own, my own teaching and learning as well so that I can provide those experiences. I don't have the time to sit down and create interactive widgets all the time.
Right.
I would love to if I had the opportunity. But there are different ways that this, so, without the one-to-one or with the one-to-one current with the teachers, it would help the teachers in their instruction and also the students in their understanding of the content.
Right. And then, as I said, that was the parts that I really liked and understood. And this has been something I've been really concerned about in my region. So, I would say my, my cautions are ensuring that the community is engaged because of the concerns that many of us experienced as parents, and making sure that parents understand that this, this is what you talked about, an enhancement to learning. It provides access to students who don't have it. And, and maybe we need to change a little bit of the timeline in order to get that information out and to have better understanding. And the last thing is, I, boy, I know it's, I don't even know what the cost would be, Ms. Michael, if we didn't have the user fee. But I think we need to see that.
Okay.
But I think, I know it's a lot, Janie, but I think we need to see it.
I'd like to say it clean up, that I'll be quick, but I'm not. And I waited to see if my colleagues, if anybody would ask the question, and nobody did. So, so, look, I am extremely frustrated about this topic. I started bringing up digital citizenship in 2013. I've done university presentations on this. I was in the first ISTI National Town Hall on digital education when I went to Atlanta in 2014. The one question no one asked is, "It sounds great. It sounds like it's wonderful. And I want you to have the resources you need as, as teachers to take stuff off your plate. What does it do for student achievement? Does putting a computer, putting curriculum on a computer and a computer or a device in the hands of a student translate into improved student achievement?" And what did you say when I asked you that question last week? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm going to.
I think I said a couple things. I don't remember exactly what I said. That by itself is not going to be the answer. There's a lot of other components that we need to take into consideration, right? The first one, though, is overcoming that bridge of equity to access an opportunity. We've, we've got to get that, right? But there's a lot of other things that have to be in place. The professional development has to be there. The integration has, into our curriculum has to be there. There's lots of other things that have to be there.
I understand all that. My frustration is not specifically with staff on this. Let me just make it clear. I'm frustrated about this topic because we're being launched, and, and I guarantee it, and I shared with Dr. Braybrand and, and some of the staff last week, a New York Times article, if anybody saw it, on, on Silicon Valley's reach into public education. And you, Ms. Lufflass, happened to bring up, "Oh, Bright Bites." And I went, the first thing I went is, "I wonder who owns Bright Bites." So I go right to the ed tech partners, Apex Learning, Kickboard, Nuventive, Branching Minds, all of the, these people are looking to make money off of public education. They hold summits, there are conferences, and guess what? The, the principals and the superintendents who are featured in the magazines, who talk about innovation in the classroom are the ones who wind up going and being speakers at their conferences, and it, and so on. And I want to be extraordinarily cautious about this because, as I said in 2013, digital access, digital e-commerce, digital literacy, digital law, digital health and wellness, digital security, digital communication, digital etiquette, and digital rights and responsibilities. That's what digital citizenship is altogether. And, and us launching into a notion that, on the one hand, and can you go to the very first slide? The one that is the, the plu, the plus? Because that's, this is what I queued in. What's on the left side of that plus sign? I don't have any problem with. I don't have, even if it involves some degree of digital curriculum. But you have to ask yourself, "Why are the textbook companies no longer producing textbooks?" They're not producing it because, guess who their underwriting funding partners are? Those guys in Silicon Valley. And if you look at Bright, Bright Bites, guess where they're located? Shock, San Francisco. I'm, I'm floored. So my problem is, is when you add what's to the left with what's to the right of the plus sign, which is, "Oh, well, if you want to access digital commerce, I mean, digital curriculum, well, now you need the one to one." And so now we're talking about accessing not a few million, not a couple of, you know, 10, 15 million. You are talking tens of millions of dollars. And I just did quick back-of-the-envelope calculations, like, you know, I'm, you know, I know this is way out of character for me. 189,000 students, if 35% are FRM, I don't, I asked Ms. Lufflass.
Twenty-eight percent.
Okay, well, I, I assumed 50%.
And 22 are free.
So I assumed 50%. I was super generous and said 50% are free, okay? So 122,850 students at $70 a student is $8.6 million for one year, plus another 2.315 million from the half-price reduction to half the students, which means that's a lot more. That's 10.9 million in one year off the backs of families that we're going to say, we're going to take, that I know you're going to say, "Well, it's not now." This is a rolling forward, this is a roll, hold on. This is a rolling forward, unless you're going to say, "We're going to charge the technology fee for four years, and then we're going to end the technology fee."
Oh, no, no.
But we never met a fee that we ended easily.
I, I wanted to just clarify that we were only charging the technology fee for students in grades three through 12, right?
Ah, okay, all right, so, you know, a million here, a million there, sooner or later.
In general, it will be $7.5 million in fees each year.
Yeah, well, or, or more. So, you know, seven, somewhere between, you know, it's, the, the, the truth probably lies in the middle. Somewhere between $7.5 million to $10.9 million per year. So in a four-year high school student cycle, if you had one student, you know, that's $280. But now you're talking, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, $40 million on top of all the money that you're showing for us. So this becomes, you know, a very entrenched, very quickly, because once you head down the road, I mean, we're already being nudged. Well, equity, 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 you have six high schools that have it, so now you have to get everybody else. We haven't talked about a platform. We haven't talked about access on buses. All the student athletes, all the student theater and fine arts performers who travel, what do you do about their, their access on their, to their now digital curriculum, on their digital device that they're sending home? We heard earlier, about a month and a half ago, basically, I, I don't even remember the number of, the vast number of repair calls that are being built. I mean, we're building an IT system inside an educational organization. And the Silicon Valley slash billionaire Bill Gates-type funding desire to get into public education is very closely tied to this. And I want, this is not a question of, and I forget who said it, maybe it was Mrs. Corbin Sanders said repeating, she's afraid of repeating the mistake previously of the online textbooks. This isn't repeating it. This is potentially exponentially compounding a problem. So I, I have a, I have a giant red flag in my head about what we know our, our students are experiencing in terms of stress. Because if you're online, you know, by the way, we're, we're, we're funding the Wi-Fi at home, and one of the things I said is, "What if they start watching Netflix? Well, we could, we could shut it off." I mean, you're talking about creating a funding stream to underwrite more time of kids at the very same time we're having an argument about the fact that they should have more recess, more time in front of screens. And not only more time in front of screens in school, but more time in front of screens at home. So I'm, I'm, I'm not all in. I don't think this is great. I don't think we've asked the right questions. I don't think four years and boom, we've got everybody hooked on a device. And not only hooked on a device, we are now using the backs of kids to fund our future budgets. Because the whole concept is, is that this is the, the painting, the San Francisco Bridge. You paint it 365 days a year. Because the second you get to one end, you have to start back over and keep. So the second we get a, a technology device, it's, it's old, or it's aging. And it's going to have to be replaced, and it's going to have to be supported. And we're going to need the professional development. We're going to hire new teachers, and they will not have had the professional development. And now how much time are they going to be spending on, on PD that's related to running the tech, accessing the tech, updating their knowledge of the tech? You know, this is, you know, danger, danger, Will Robinson, to me. So on, on that side, and we haven't even talked about the component of the, the ability of parents to be able to support their children on things like math homework online. And then, oh, by the way, what happens when you have multiple children? What happens if you have four children in FCPS? Now, now you have $280 per year on technology fees? And then what do you, now you have four devices at home? And now you're encouraging the kids, once they get home, everybody's sitting in front of their device? I mean, I, I am, this is, you know, something I'm passionately interested in, and I'm extremely worried at the same time that, you know, our Napster founder is ratting out Mark Zuckerberg as, you know, basically being evil for getting, knowing, they knew when they had these people on these devices that you were accessing brain chemistry and that, that the, the dopamine hits of more and more and more and more was built into the programming. And, you know, the worry that the, the, the money and the industry that's behind this is not necessarily putting kids' academic success, academic achievement. And if I can't have a study handed to me that says, "If you put a device in a kid's hand with a digital curriculum, that in two to three years, you will have academic successes and achievement like you've never seen," then I'm not all in, so. That, that, yes, I'm, I'm finally finished.
Would that, could I, could I use the next steps? I'm giving Mrs. George a time to catch her breath.
I need water.
And I would say, as, as we pull up the.
Tell me I'm wrong.
I would never tell you you're wrong. What I would do, and what I wanted to do, is invite anybody who has more questions for more time, for more conversation with me, Mary Beth, and, and other folks. Because we understand that while we devoted, you know, going on two hours to this topic, this is a big topic. We're talking about big investments. And we certainly would want to spend the time that, you know, we have to work with any board member to make sure that you have answers to the questions that you either asked today or future questions that might arise. So I'm happy to do that at any time as we develop our next steps here.
Okay, could you, so far we see two next steps up there. I don't have any names. I don't know, so, who's is the first one? Is that, is Mrs. McLaughlin, is that yours?
I mean, it's saying separate out the new additional dollars with recurring expenditures. I, I just think we definitely need a one-page fact sheet that's going to say, "Here's total cost. Here's where we're, you know, capturing existing expenditures through other means, and then here's going to be the net cost."
So, so Mrs. McLaughlin, craft your sentence.
Okay. Staff to provide a one-page fact sheet on total costs that include revenue and net expenses.
Okay.
Is that what we're talking about here? Yeah.
Megan, can we add my thing, which isn't up there, about fees too? Separate out the amount, the additional amount for fees?
So can I try to see if I'm summarizing right? Maybe I can get it. What you're really looking for is not only the first-year costs that we showed on the sheet, but once it's fully implemented, in a year where it's fully implemented, what are the total expenditures? And then where is the revenue coming from that's supporting those expenditures, right?
Yes, but since it's a four-year proposed rollout, I think you've got to show year, you need to show year one through year four, and then what's the, the after-years, year five plus?
Okay.
Yeah.
If you could, but if you could do that with and without the fees, do it that way.
I'll break out the revenue sources. You can see what we repurposed.
Thank you.
Right, as well as fees.
Okay, so that's Mrs. McLaughlin and Mr. Rina Kofax. We'll put two names up there. Schedule a closing meeting on fees, additional information, the user fees. I think that came from some of us, including myself.
Can, can we add, though, with regard to FAP on the second bullet? Because that's specifically what.
Sure, sure.
What question I want to address?
On the second one, there was a second, usual fee, usual fee, that includes FAP.
In Virginia, because it's a particular Virginia requirement.
FAP.
And say in Virginia.
In Virginia.
Because it is Virginia code.
Sure. And I have Ms. Evans.
So this is, I guess, a process question. I, I think there were a, a lot of concerns voiced on a variety of things. What, what is, what's our, what do we, what next? Where are we, where and when are we going to actually consider this as a board?
At this point in time, I think, my understanding is that what the, those two dates that we saw on one of those slides are the dates when we will be taking actions. We are scheduled to take actions.
So we're, we're still, we think we're going to be ready to take action on December 14th?
That we do not know.
It's the, is the, if the initial action is on the textbook adoption. And that's on.
That's on 7th, 7th.
December 7th. So we're, we're talking about trying to finish this in December. I just, I, I have a little bit of skepticism about that, considering the questions that were raised today.
Okay. I, I had Corbin Sanders and then Mrs. McLaughlin.
Prior to any adoption, I think we have to have a plan for engaging our community to determine the community's support and best approach to going forward. So I would like staff to provide us with a plan on how we would engage the community, what questions we would pose to the community, how we would collect both community input, concerns raised by the community, and.
That's a one-on, that's a one-on sentence, so if you could. So could you, you think?
Staff to provide a plan on how we will engage community and prior to making a decision on, on this. Because I don't think we can make a decision without being informed by the community.
So what, are you, are you? Are you, are you asking superintendent to bring back a proposed plan to engage?
Correct.
For the board's blessing?
Basically, if we could get a proposed plan by the next board meeting and then, because, I guess my question, or my statement would be that we should be delaying a decision on this until we've done this.
So, so what's the timeline you want the superintendent to bring a plan?
What works for you, Superintendent Braybrand?
Can, can I ask a clarifying question here before we go a lot farther? So which piece are you suggesting that we have a community engagement plan around? Is it around the materials?
I think of both.
Is it around the devices?
I think of the both.
Or is it around both?
Well, because you coupled the two, it's a little messy. I mean, I would have preferred to have a basal instruction presentation and then a one-to-one presentation. So if what you're saying is.
So we can decouple it right now.
You would like to decouple the two and then have a standalone decision on the basal instructional.
The teachers clarified and, and, and staff clarified, they adopted the materials absent the one-to-one.
I understand that. Then I would say one of our next steps is to decouple the basal instruction decision from the one-to-one decision.
If I could just clarify, there, it's already decoupled. So currently, it's scheduled to come as a new business item to the board, the instructional materials on November 20th, and then for a vote on December 7th. So I was just asking for clarification. Are we still okay with that timeline? And what we need to do is adjust the one-to-one timeline based on the community engagement plan?
We are fine with that, as long as we clarify that one is not contingent on the other. But the way that this was presented, they were contingent on each other.
So let's go back to what, the next step, Ms. Corbin Sanders, you were advocating for, is to direct the superintendent to bring back a proposal for community engagement on what?
On the one-to-one FCPS on.
FCPS on.
Which includes the, the fees, the rollout to the high schools.
Not the basal materials, not just the FCPS on.
Correct.
Okay, that's, and then bringing back to when, superintendent?
Well, one, one clarification. Is it, I'm asking, and, well, let me just be clear. My preference would be that we would engage in community outreach and engagement and then bring that to you as part of our presentation that we would do now at a later date than the December 14th, as opposed to bringing a plan back, going over the plan to the community. If I could direct the superintendent to do community engagement, we'll, we'll work to do that. I'll certainly keep you in the loop.
I am perfectly fine with that. But we have to engage the community.
Right, and then, and then we could, we, community engagement plan, and we would look to find a, a later date to bring you back to the board, probably in, probably in January or the beginning of 18. Decouple it, give us a little more time, give us more time to do the community engagement, get some of the other questions answered you want to answer.
So we will, we will change that to direct superintendent to do community engagement on FCPS on.
Correct.
And putting back the, the results by?
No later than January 31st.
So can I then add that we are postponing a decision on what we're going to do with the mid-year budget until after we get that? Because the mid-year budget is using this money, right?
So we, we would still want to take action on the mid-year budget review, but as part of that action, the school board could decide to set that funding that we are recommending for FCPS on aside and to hold it and not spend it until after the community engagement is complete and the board has direction.
That's fine.
Okay, so, so if, if that is supported by the majority of the board, by default, we're not going to be taking an action on the December 7th. It doesn't have to be brought up as a new business.
Right, so, so again, so that I understand, we go forward with the adoption of the math textbook as planned, but that we, we're directing the superintendent to community engagement, we'll come back and we will have an update for, it's basically the rollout of one-to-one for high schools. And that that would be no later than January 31st, 20. And then, wait, hold on a minute, because I need to make sure, because we have playing agendas, that for the mid-year budget review, that we would simply hold back. We wouldn't spend that money, we would hold it back pending the results of the community engagement.
But it's not one-to-one only for high schools. It's initially for high schools with the plan of going all the way down to third grade. Because you, if we are engaging our community, we need to let them know that longer-term plan is that.
Ms. Corbin Sanders, I think, you know, future year budget decisions will be made in the future. We make one year at a time, actual spending decisions.
Right, but, but it just, technically, the decisions that we make a year at a time.
So let's get, let's get the community feedback first. No later than, no later than January 31st, and then we'll move from there. And I have Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. George.
So I want to humbly suggest a little refining on that timeline, Mr. Moon. We will get the superintendent's, you know, proposed budget on January 11th. The board will then vote on a advertised budget or proposed budget to send over to the board supervisors on February 8th. So the superintendent bringing us to something, you know, no later than the 31st, we're going to be knee-deep, one week away, from voting on the proposed budget that we sent over to the board supervisors. And then we sit on our hands for half of February, all of March, and most of April, waiting for the supervisor to decide what his budget. So I don't want us to be, as a board, under the gun with CIP, budget, and now this, and, and not being more thoughtful.
Okay, so what are you advocating?
I'm, I, I think the January 31st deadline is, you know, a nice theory, but I don't know why we aren't saying mid-February. I mean, we don't need this information to confuse and distract and overwhelm the board with more stuff when we're going to be coming out of the clearing on the budget. I just think this is bad timing to be putting on staff even. They're going to be really busy too. So my advocacy is.
Just remember that this is a, this would be a component of that budget.
Well, then, that, then I guess if this has to be the component of that budget, then my, my one concern, Dr. Braybrand, is our families are going to be coming back in January, and if there's any community engagement effort made, you know, before the new year and the holidays, people are going to be upset. So it's going to be a tight timeline.
So hopefully, hopefully, that's, that's a January 31st, it's the last, it's a deadline by which she's going to have to bring us a feedback. Hopefully, he can bring those data back much earlier.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Moon. What I was trying to get at is that there's a window, and I don't want, we get, we get in trouble with our public and our community when they think that we ask for their input at the most inopportune time. And pretty much the winter break will be bad.
So let's do this. If you have an alternate day, suggest that, please.
Mr. Moon, you helped clarify that we have to do it by January 31st. So my only humble advice to the superintendent is do it after the January start back.
Okay, all right. All right, I have Mrs. George to be followed by Ms. Evans.
I'm going to go, again, the entire different direction. I can't believe we're talking about, really, over the next several budget cycles, you know, between what the kids are going to invest with the families and what we're talking about investing, we're really talking about altering the course of public education in Fairfax County Public Schools, fundamentally. Fundamentally, we're saying we're going to go to a, a digital framework of delivering curriculum for your students. We're not exactly sure how we're going to pay for it. And by the way, a bunch of the way we're going to pay for it is you're going to pay for future kids. Because we don't want to, we don't want to fund it in the out years. So we're only going to partially fund it, and we're going to just leap into this. And I'm, I'm not saying that staff is saying we're leaping into it, but really, that's what we're saying as a board. We are fundamentally altering the process, and I don't think we ought to step anywhere near it. I don't think we're ready. We're, 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 we're sitting here looking at a calendar, trying to fit, like, we haven't had a conversation with each other about if this is anything we even want to do, never mind had conversations with the public. I think we need to have a intentional, so, so my, my thought is, take this off, off the table. We're not doing this this year. We are not prepared. We haven't had a conversation.
Craft, craft, craft your language.
I think, I think your public engagement, frankly, Dr. Braybrand, ought to go, "You know what? We're going to need about six to eight months of intensive public engagement to talk about, are we going to digitize and put into the hands of every single student with the collaboration of." with the collaboration of funding by the members of the public who happen to go to our schools? And, you know, are we going to waiver kids out? Are we going to have a sliding fee scale if you have multiple kids? I mean, you know, you, you explained to us the mentality, and we didn't really go through your four green squares, your diagonal squares, about why you said, well, we should do high school, we had, we had more conversation in the pre-meeting about why, why the order of, of students, we, we haven't had that conversation as a board.
So craft your advocacy, so that we can see what the consensus is.
P-U-N-T, punt.
Okay, I think somebody might want to translate P-U-N-T into the proper language, all right.
The comprehensive, a comprehensive public engagement plan is going to take time with the board and with the public, and that it's not going to be done in this, in this, in this between now and when we pass the budget.
We've got two more topics, all right?
So I think let's go to, the fourth bullet could be direct the Superintendent to conduct extensive public engagement on FCPS on and bring back the update to the board. Well, no, I didn't want to, we've got one bullet.
She's a punt.
Yeah. I think, but really, what I heard her say is, you need a more comprehensive one. So instead of it being that we're going to come back to the board on January 31st, 2018, it's extensive public engagement for consideration of fall 2019 and roll, rollout.
So postpone, postpone any action on this until fall of 2018. Meanwhile, direct the Superintendent to engage, to deeper community engagement, is that, is that fair?
It is, and I'll just give you a, for example, the first, the first, the first partner with Breitbart is Apex Learning. Apex Learning was founded by the co-founder of Microsoft.
All right, all right.
That's the type of people that are underwriting all of this.
We have one more board member, Ms. Evans, for the next step.
So in connection to that, if we approve the basal materials and don't approve the one-to-one devices, what's, what are the ramifications of that?
Well, we're sub-optimizing, I would say, the use of the materials, right? So we definitely want to adopt the materials. We went through a comprehensive committee process, the committee selected these materials, and we can, we can utilize them in our classroom, right? But we are sub-optimizing the use of those materials, because not every student in Fairfax County is going to be able to access those materials at home. Many will, some will not.
So that, that certainly gives me some pause to think that we're going to approve basal materials that, and will we have enough hardback books if we don't go to one-to-one? Will we have enough hard...
And our curriculum is in many different forms, right? So we have the hardback books that we adopted five years ago that can still be used, right? And we have a lot of other curriculum materials that we have, many, many of which we've created in Fairfax County that can be used.
So you're saying that the new...
But students without devices at home, or without the connectivity at home, would not be able to use the digital components.
Would not be able to use the digital components, they would have to use old tech, old hardcover textbooks, is that correct?
They would use another form of material.
So we would have, we would have more of a digital divide then, rather than less of a digital divide.
That's correct.
Mr. Moon, could we vote on that last piece?
Yeah, I...
When I have Ms. Evans' next step put up, and then we'll go through all of those next steps.
And I, okay, so, so just deciding, kind of on the fly, to postpone action until fall 2018, I, I don't know where we're going with this, frankly. I mean, I really...
Ms. Evans, I'm asking for your next step.
Mine, well, I, I was looking for an answer to the question, I got the answer to the question, so...
So you don't have an extra step?
I don't have another, a next step, other than, we need to figure this out.
So my bullet actually does not preclude Superintendent engaging with the community and coming back and saying, we may need to engage further. That gives you a, a temp, we can actually have our fingers on the pulse and know what's happening with the community and how they're feeling about it by January 31st. And at that point, we can either postpone any action or determine that we have information and we can make an action.
All right, we can vote no at the time, okay.
Shouldn't we then, going back to my previous question, postpone action on the basal materials as well? Because we won't know.
When that comes up for the vote, then you can, you can make that argument.
One other piece of information that's important about the basal materials is that our current math contract expires this summer, next summer. So we will have nothing if we don't approve something.
Okay, with that, I am going, okay...
I need, I'm sorry, I need a point of clarification, because I, I think we're all trying to be as authentic with information as possible. But when this school division five years ago went to an online math textbook, I mean, there was a handful of textbooks in the classroom if kids needed to check them out. But it was predominantly expected that kids were working with a digital textbook. So when we're talking about the digital inequity, or the digital lack of access and all that stuff, what have we been doing for the last four or five years? So I, I guess, where, I'm just wanting everybody to be very careful, is that I'm not hearing staff saying that we passed the basal instruction on December 7th, and suddenly now we have an, you know, an inequity of access? Because we've already been working on making sure that our families that didn't have technology, that we were, you know, working with, was it Comcast, or who was it that was providing it?
I mean, we have those programs, but there is truly still an inequity in a digital divide issue. So yes, we've, we've, you know, provided information about the tech-at-home programs, they provide information about the Cox and Comcast programs, but there still is an inequity for those that can't, don't want to get to the public library to use the...
Many family members at home, one computer.
So I guess this is, this is where, Dr. Brabrand, honestly, this is what makes it hard for the board to have an informed conversation. Because right now, we're, we're hearing sort of a reference to it, but I don't know the numbers. Am I, are we talking about 10% of our kids have had no digital access, other than, because I don't think a public library is a solution to it? So...
8% do not have internet access at home, and we have 83% that say they have enough devices at home today, in terms of not having, for their kids. So that means 17% do not.
Have enough devices, which the McLachlan family, which, with an income I'm not going to report, we technically didn't have enough, I mean, so I hear what you're saying.
Well, 17% of the families report that they do not have adequate devices at home to support their children.
Right, because not everybody, I mean, if I had three kids at home in school, I didn't have three laptops for my children. So that, that's a reality. I guess I'm a little just frustrated, because I'm going to go back to what Elizabeth Schultz said. If, if we're talking about a major transformation, how we deliver instruction in Fairfax County schools, then this all feels extremely rushed. And we are where we are right now, so rushing it then for another six months then versus making a smart decision is, I think, what's a little concerning to me. Well, I will say at the very end, here's my worry, January 31st, in order to do what everybody said, which is to not just engage the community, get their input, but to educate them and make them comfortable with the decision we're about to make, I just think that sounds really ambitious. So we all in this room have to be very prepared that there could be a backlash, because people will say, what does this mean? We've been sitting in this meeting, and I still, I've been hearing conflicting things. On the one hand, I hear the only way we're going to be delivering math instruction is we need a, we need a one-to-one device, and then we're saying, well, no, not necessarily, it will be another tool, it'll be another resource, and so...
Let me try to clarify, let me try to, let me try to clarify that, and I apologize if I've created any confusion on this, and it is very complicated, right? When we did our math adoption five years ago, we really did adopt a hybrid text, hard copy text, and online text. Those things correlated one-to-one, they were one and the same, essentially. And that online text had a lot of technological limitations to it, wasn't interactive, wasn't personalized, wasn't adaptive, right? It basically was an electronic version of what you had in a hard copy. So the board, listening to the community, for families that were having difficulty accessing the online version of that material, went back and allocated money to ensure that any student that needed hard copy access, because they were going to have limits with the digital access, could have hard copy access. So the board really addressed that issue, and I really appreciated all the leadership and the work that many folks showed on that. What we're talking about here is different, though. We're talking about interactive, adaptive materials to complement our existing curriculum. So we can utilize those, and we want to utilize those in the classroom, but a student will not have the opportunity to utilize them at home if we don't have the one-to-one devices, if they don't have enough devices in their home, or if they don't have connectivity in their home. It doesn't mean that they won't be able to access our math curriculum and get, you know, hard copy practice sets, or use the hard copy materials we, we adopted five years ago. They can, but what they won't have access to are the parts of this digital curriculum that are so intriguing to us, right? The innovative components, the adaptability, the differentiation, the personalization. They won't have an opportunity to, to practice and learn math in those ways outside of the classroom. So it, it's confusing, but it is different.
Comment on that, real quick?
It's a 6...
We need to...
You'll be the, you'll be the, you'll be the last one. I'm not taking, any more board member. Comment on questions after this. Let's move on.
But what you've just suggested is that people won't be able to take full advantage of it, based on the fact that we're not going to one-to-one, but immediately. But isn't it clear that because we're only rolling it out to high school students in the initial phase, we won't have that full access and opportunity provided to every student from third grade to eighth grade?
So we were, we were choosing to, again, scale in the adoption over time for a couple reasons. One, to try to fully utilize and get the highest return on our investment that we could get, and two, to make this as financially feasible as possible.
No, and I appreciate that, and I, I think you've done a great job, but what I'm saying is, we already have gone with the hybrid model if we don't do this all at once. So the hybrid model is, some kids will be able to take advantage of the full capabilities of the software, of the textbook, and others won't. And so the question is, is that 17% that don't have access at home, is the 17% primarily in our high schools? You know, we haven't really figured out what the cost is, or is it 17% of all high school students are in the same situation? So I don't think we're going to solve this problem here tonight, but I do think that we need to have a community engagement to understand what, where the community is on this issue before we go full throttle on it, on the FCPS on.
And I completely respect that, I really do. I do want to just say, though, that this isn't something that is coming completely out of the blue, right? We do have the information from our Phase 1 schools and our e-learning backpack schools. So we've got 20 schools, essentially, that we've been working with, doing this work for a year and a half now. So again, we intentionally did that pilot to get the kind of information about what kind of supports would be needed, how would we work with community. So we do have a baseline set of information, and we do have some ideas about best practices and risks, and so we have been taking those steps. Now, I completely appreciate that going from 20 schools to 200 is a huge endeavor to scale, and we need to go at the rate and the pace that works for the community and for this board.
Okay, with that, we're going to make some decisions on the next steps. Obviously, the bottom, the very last one, from Mrs. Schorch and Mrs. McLachlan, has the most significance on the process we'll be following, so we'll, we'll do that first. Postpone any action until fall 2018. Meanwhile, direct Superintendent to conduct in-depth community engagement. Those who are supporting that, raise your hand. Opposing, okay, that fails. We've got a third one. Direct Superintendent to the community engagement on FCPS on, bring back to the board, no later than January 31, 2018. Corvus Sanders, raise your hand. Supporting, all right, that I think, okay, that passes. And then we've got a second one, schedule closed meeting on fees and FAP. Those supporting that, raise your hand. Okay, we'll have a closed meeting. Step to provide the one-page fact sheet on total cost, raise your hand.
Mr. Moon, could I ask if, as part of that, we could get what the total cost would be if we provided devices for the 17%?
Just for the 17%?
I, I would be interested in knowing that figure.
Sorry, do we feel that's a comprehensive, or is it just the people who answered the survey, I wasn't clear about that?
We ask this every year now on our, our emergency contact form, emergency care form, so it's, it's as accurate as people, as parents report.
Okay, 17%, okay, let's assume that that's included. Those who are supporting that request, raise your hand. All right, thank you so much for that, this work session is over. I thank you, teachers, for putting up with us.
Okay.
Until this late hours.
Thank you. We're going to do the budget next, because our budget people have a meeting at 7:00.